We have a call-out system. It works, mostly. Do I have to wait for Jason to say something? Okay, thank you, Jason. Appreciate that. Good evening, everybody. I'm going to call our meeting to order at 6:30 PM. And if you could please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the Pride of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And thank you for that. Tonight's meeting begins with a public hearing. So I'm going to start right off with public hearing before we go to our regular agenda. Notice is hereby given under Chapter 148, Section 13 of the Mass General Laws that AN-ANFA LLC of 929-931 Salem Street, Groveland, has applied for a fuel storage license of 22,000 gallons at 929... That should be 931 again? In the hearing notice that I'm reading? Yes?
931.
Okay, thank you. So 929-931 Salem Street of Groveland, Mass. The application for this license is for the storage of two above-ground fuel storage tanks, one 12,000 gallon and one 10,000 gallon. The Select Board, acting as the licensing authority, will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, February 18th, 2025, at 6:30 PM. All interested parties are invited to attend. I need a motion under this reading that I just gave to open the hearing.
So motioned.
You have a second on that?
Second.
All in favor of the motion? It's unanimous, and the hearing is now open.
So I do not see the attorney and/or the applicant here with us this evening. But if you recall, the Select Board did hear this application last spring. The reason that it's for you is really kind of a technicality. They should have been listed as above-ground storage tanks instead of underground storage tank. So therefore, the State Fire Marshal's Office has kicked back the application for it to be re-noticed and go through the public hearing process again. So nothing has really changed, other than what they are referring to the tanks as, which are above-ground storage tanks.
Okay, so we are required to have this hearing. If there is any member of the public that does wish to speak or ask a question, you could do so now. If not, I'll go through my board members. And Ed, do you have a question or concern?
I don't have a question.
Okay. No?
I'm good.
You're good? Becky?
Nothing for me.
Okay. We'll make a motion to approve it, and then we close the hearing. Would be the order of the day, right? So can I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the application.
Okay, any further discussion? There be none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? It is unanimous. I need a motion to close the hearing.
So motioned.
Say it. Thank you. Okay, and spend motioned and seconded. I'll call for the vote. All in favor of closing the hearing? And that is unanimous as well. Thank you for your patience, and now that is approved. Next would be public comment. Do we have anyone here tonight that wishes to make a public comment? At this time, okay. So then I'll move on to our agenda. We have seven items listed under our discussion and possible vote. Item one is the Friends of the Council on Aging have a request to waive a yard sale permit fee. Number two is assign a placement approval, and it's a request from Allison Caldwell to place a sign at Elm Park. Number three refers to 36 Garrison Street. We've received the letter of determination for the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. Number four is 46 Washington Street, building potential for rehabilitation and reuse. Number five is a general bylaw review discussion for the 2025 Annual Town Meeting. Six is the food composting program, request for approval. And seven is trash and recycling discussion, which has been an ongoing item, and I will give an update at that time. So starting with number one, the Friends of the Council on Aging, we have a request to waive the yard sale permit fee for a fundraising event hosted by the Friends of the Council on Aging. Has everyone had time to review the request? Need a motion to approve waiving the yard sale permit fee.
I'll make a motion that we approve it. It seems like a reasonable request.
I agree. I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion?
No, I believe it is something that we've done in the past.
Yeah, I agree too. Okay, all in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you. Number two, we have assigned placement approval request from Allison Caldwell to place a sign at the top of Elm Park across from the municipal parking lot. This sign would be a request for a kidney donation. Is Allison here tonight?
Allison's son had a basketball game, so...
Okay, see...
A thoughtful donor. I'm the recipient.
Oh, Mike, of course. That's why I keep looking.
Yeah, I kind of look at the pictures though.
Yes. Okay. Oh, yep, obviously. So, yes. So, yeah.
We have four. So I see you all have the drawing.
Yes, we do.
Four by six banner.
Yes.
We'd like to put up at the beginning of March. Tomorrow, I'm putting it up at Ski Rapids.
Okay, yeah.
And then I'm not really sure where Elm Park is, you know, the significant place that's supposed to go.
I thought... Did you have some thoughts, Rebecca, on that? More towards the front of it, so people would see it better, visibility?
The banners get put up on the bridge, and I know that's state property, but, they get put up on the rail of the bridge in front of the gas station, behind Speedway and so forth.
Right. But that's not really our... Well, we do put things there, but...
We do not.
Oh, okay. I don't know who gets the permission for those.
Mass DOT does.
Oh, okay. That goes to another...
There's only complaints they stay there.
Yes. So, yes, so Elm Park, we do have control over, so, yes. And we've had signage up there. So does anybody have any questions or concerns?
I think Broadside, along the cross from the package stores, we could stop the people's shoes. Yeah, that's all the trouble. Center maybe, if it's loud. I just don't think that's where they put up. Can't really free stand.
Yeah, because if you're up at the King Street, we're not...
I think as people come down towards Elm Park, they, hopefully, they tend to slow down. So as... Before they actually get to that...
Broadside, along anyway, they seem like the people's...
I think you would see it, yeah. And I think we have the lawn frontage right in that area. That would be good visibility.
It's nothing that's going to be permanent, so...
No, but I think we're glad to help out.
Maybe we can get the highway guys to help us system too, maybe.
Okay, well, I think they've got most of it under control. Yeah. So do we... I would need a motion to approve it? So you wanted to start it in March?
Yes.
Okay. And do you have any determination you want it through the summer or for...
I guess, you know, as long as you need it.
As long as you need... Yeah, right, okay. I understand.
If it's in bad shape, I'll just replace it.
Okay, okay. Because, I mean, once they start mowing, they'll have to take it up when they mow. That's all. But we did that with the school signage too, right? For the seniors?
So they have in the past asked for signage on Elm Park. This year, they'll be proposing a different location. But have approved that in the past.
But, yeah, and we did that. And then when they had to mow, they just had to move the signs, right?
Correct.
But this is just one sign, okay. So do we want to make a motion on this?
So I'll make a motion to approve the banner going up in Elm Park, and also to work with the Highway Department to make sure they don't hit any water lines and such.
Oh, okay.
Plus, I think they'll have a... Give them a better idea of how to place it, where to place it, where it's visible, and give somebody that can help facilitate that.
Okay. And so that's your motion?
That's my motion.
All of that?
All of that.
I'll second that. All of it.
All of it. Any further discussion? No, we're glad to help. Okay, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? It is unanimous. Hopefully, we'll help out. Thank you.
Now, you must be a skier, or else you just went over to the ski area to get that picture taken.
Yeah, I'm in the ski school there.
Yes, he's been running for years. How many years? It feels like it doesn't have to be... I know my husband still goes over there some days and hangs out. Yeah, yeah. All right, well, thank you for stopping by, all right? Let us know if we can help any further.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Okay, and next is the 36 Garrison Street. Everybody has been able to see the letter from the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities that makes the project eligible for funding, doesn't approve it, but it sends it to the next step. I think Rebecca's still wearing our town planner hat. Can you tell us what this step means, so everybody's clear?
Correct. So we received a letter from the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, which is in response to their project eligibility letter that they had submitted seeking low-income housing tax credits. And as you can see on the screen, we received the letter on February 4, 2025, informing the applicant that they have approved their project eligibility for this particular project. So if the applicant is to move forward, they would need to submit an application through the Zoning Board of Appeals, and one of the required documentation is this letter. As of date, we have not received an application from Bethany Holmes for this particular site.
Okay. And I noticed in the... I suppose it's the standard language for these letters, but at... Under item nine, they did note that the town of Groveland and town residents have submitted numerous letters or emails to HLC regarding the project. Numerous town residents have expressed concern about the scale of the project, 90 total units, the possible impact on traffic and other matters. And HLC urges Bethany Community Services to directly address these concerns as part of the public hearing process before the Groveland Zoning Board of Appeals. So now all these concerns and letters would move over to zoning if they go to the next step and file with an application with zoning, right? Okay. And then I guess if nothing is done after two years, this terminates. This letter and the approval. At least that's what it says. Unless a comprehensive permit has been issued. So we're just trying to keep everybody informed of this process and what it means and what's happened. So this is just that next step in the process. And the letter is available online to everybody? Yes?
Yes, we have placed the letter on the project site, on the website.
Okay. All right, so...
Are there any questions? I mean, not confrontation, but just any question?
Oh, sure, if you have a question about the letter, of course. Yes, absolutely. I mean... You would, yes, because if you don't go to there, they don't hear you on TV. I guess we should ask them to give us a microphone that can sit kind of on a chair.
Christina... Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Christina Manikis, 24 King Street. I just want to know, when and if Bethany Holmes goes to the zoning board, what is the timeframe for notification for Butters of the meeting?
I don't know that. So for a Butter notification, it would run where they would need to notify Butters within 300 feet of the project, within, I believe, 14 days prior to the public hearing.
Okay, would they... Would people know before 14 days? Would it be common knowledge that that's coming? Or will it all of a sudden, boom, in 14 days, we're having the meeting?
So under the law, your required mail notification is 14 days. And then you also need to publicly notice in a newspaper of current circulation within the area 14 days prior, twice. So 14 days and then seven days prior to the public hearing. So it would run two times in the newspaper prior to the public hearing.
But is it possible that they would have submitted something to you prior to the 14 days?
Yes.
And how do we find out about that?
So as soon as we receive an application, we have a new procedure where we notify the Select Board during a public hearing, at a public hearing, or, excuse me, at a public meeting. And we will also try and be proactive in getting information out on the website once the application is filed, et cetera. So if we had any calls prior to, the information would be available for residents to reveal.
Thank you. So it would be in... So you started a new category, projects under review, and it would be 36 Garrison, as opposed to where it is now?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Yes, Joe? We have to go to the microphone? It's the TV thing. We don't have a hand mic. Oh, we have some over there.
Thank you, Joe Demore, 9 Cherry Tree Link. Regarding an appeal by the Butters, is that a possibility that can be done now directly to the under-Secretary racer? Or is the opportunity only available should a permit be submitted and public hearing is available at zoning board meetings? For the public to say, you know, we're against this?
So there is no appeal process to them issuing their determination letter? Once an application is filed with the Zoning Board of Appeals, the Zoning Board of Appeals has the ability to deny the application. If it were to deny the application, then the appeal process through the applicant would be through the Housing Appeals Court, in which case that process would go through the state.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, so again, the next process, the next step most likely to happen would be that the applicant will file with the zoning board, and you will receive notification, and the Select Board will be notified as well that the zoning board has received the application. And at that point, the application would have to be in the form of what they intend to do, right? So if they're going to make any changes?
Correct.
Okay. So there's nothing to really appeal against right now. I mean, the Housing Authority noted that we have contacted them, that we have sent in letters, that we have raised concerns, and they're saying, okay, fine, bring your concerns to the zoning board. So, you know, the Select Board issued a letter to the Housing Authority and will issue the same concerns to the zoning board. And I guess it's better, I think, to have those conversations and hearings here in town than to have them up at the state level, I would think, right? That way, we can all participate in it and get our concerns heard. And do we have a timeline on how long the hearings can go until the zoning board has to make a decision?
It depends on the conversation.
Okay, so we're getting ahead of ourselves. So right now, we're just waiting. And as soon as we know something, we'll let you know. It'll be on our website, and we'll also have it on our agenda at one of our meetings under the discussion, possible vote category, that the zoning board has received an application. Okay, does anybody else... Go ahead, Ed. Thank you.
So the... As I understand it here, the next process is with the Town Zoning Board of Appeals. And that would be... They would... At that point, they would want an impact from the Fire Police Highway Department. Is that correct? Probably a traffic study done by the proposed building, the Bethany Homes or Bethany Community Services?
Correct. They will go through the process of soliciting comments from departments and providing the necessary documentation for traffic, drainage, all of the standard items that would be reviewed.
Okay, well, that would... They could also add, at that point, as part of the agreement with the zoning board, they could require sidewalks on red lines up there. I would assume.
That could be part of the discussion, yes.
Okay. Just one more thing. In the letter, under number two, the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities did an onsite inspection of the proposed Garrison Village project, and has determined that the proposed site is the appropriate location for the project. Could you find out what their track record? How many have they ever turned down?
I guess, do you want to...
Could you find out from... I don't know how you get that information, but if this meets the... It says that they did an onsite inspection. I'd like to know, how many did they inspect, how many did they turn down?
So under number two, EOHLC has performed an onsite inspection of the proposed Garrison Village project and has determined that the proposed site is an appropriate location for the project. The housing will be built on 6.7 acres of wooded and open field areas. And your question is...
Well, what I'm asking is that this is part of their job, is to do onsite inspections and approve these areas for a project like this. So I'd like to know, how many have they ever turned down? Or have they approved almost 100% of the applications? And I don't know if that number is available.
I can make the inquiry.
Okay. Because when that project was going on Salem Street, and I was there the day of, met with a man from the state who came out to look at the project to see if it met the requirements. And I asked him... I like to ask tough questions. I asked him, I said, "How long you been doing this?" I think he said, "Fourteen years." "Well, in your 14 years, how many have you turned down?" "Well, none." And my thing was, "Well, what are we doing here? You're going to approve this before you even look at it, because you haven't turned any of them down." And I'm just wondering if this is the same case here with this EOHLC, the Livable Communities. I want to find out how many they actually turned down. And I think it's going to be very low.
Okay. Oh, yes. Go ahead. Thank you.
Christina Manikis, 24 King Street. If and when this goes before the zoning board, given that the Select Board has written a letter to the state, would you go before the zoning board with the town attorney to talk about the concerns?
Yeah, we will bring those to the zoning board as well. I mean, there's a number of items here that the Housing... Executive Office of Housing raises as still not having been determined. And I think they're basically putting that onto the zoning board to make these determinations. You know, as to the ground lease, the acquisition cost. The applicant has to demonstrate sufficient capacity to successfully develop the project under the Low Income Tax Housing Tax Credit Program. So all of that, I believe, has to be done at the zoning board. And my understanding is that the zoning board will have access to funding to bring in experts. And we also have our town attorney, who has already been involved, that can be utilized as well.
So that's a possibility, that the Select Board might continue their opinion at the zoning board level?
Yes, of course, yes. It just wasn't a one-shot deal. I mean, we stand behind what we raised as concerns. Yes?
Hi, Craig Weaver, 25 Cannon Hill Ave. I just want to kind of expand on what he was just speaking about.
Yep.
The state is not interested in the preservation of your neighborhoods, the characters. They have their orders to get these housing projects jammed in every place and any place they can. So our only recourse is our own town boards. And I'm just hoping that the Planning Board, the Board of Appeals are going to stand with their neighbors and the fellow town folks and help us with this. That's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Yes, they will have to comply with our rules as well, so... At this point, we are, like I said, in a holding pattern. We'll wait for them to file an application. You know, if we're trying to guess, will they? My guess is they will. They will file the application at least and see where that goes. But I think there's still a number of items on even this bullet list that are undetermined, as far as the lease for the land and whether or not they comply with all these other standards for development. And we'll keep you posted, okay? Okay, so we're going to move on, if that's all right with everybody? Are you good with that? Okay, so next on the agenda is 46 Washington Street. It's a mistype on the agenda at 64. It's 46 Washington Street, which is the brick building that in prior years was used, I think first by the Water and Sewer, and then by highways, right? Was that the order? No, the other way?
Highway first.
Highway first, then Water and Sewer was last? You're right. Water and Sewer was the last, yes. So first it was highways and Water and Sewer. And so initially, I think, it was during my first term on the board, we did a small amount of CPA money just to kind of clean up the grounds around it. I don't know if anybody's been over that way, but that was successful. We took down the fencing, and there would... People have been throwing a lot of old furniture and junk into that fenced area, and that's all cleaned out. But now, we're at a kind of a crossroads with the property. We have... There was a CPA proposal submitted. I think it's come back here. And I think Select Board member Ed Watson, who sits on the CPA, has asked to fill us in on what the discussion was at the CPA meeting. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Basically, it was brought up at the CPA board, and there was a proposal on what to do with the building, what to use it for. And they were... Because the Board of Selectmen have the custody of the building, the control and custody of the building, they wanted to know from the Board of Selectmen what they wanted to do with the building. Because the last that was mentioned was, I think it was by you, that you're looking for recreation usage of the building. And that was brought up at a meeting. But they're... So they want... They want to know from the Select Board what they want to see done with the building. Are they okay with this particular project that has been presented? Or is there something else that they had in mind to use the building for?
Right. I think to your point, Ed, that, you know, my initial thought on the building was, it's historic, it's sitting there. But honestly, I don't know what municipal use we have for that building at this point. I do think the property that it sits on has value to the town because it goes back. There's a pond there that could potentially, if we allowed more water in, could become a place for fishing and possibly skating. At one time, it was actually a swimming place for the town, but then we had the pollution from the factory up there, and that shut that down, plus our well down. So... But the property itself, we haven't really even done a survey on to know where the line for the church ownership and the town ownership, even of the property, is. That's still a little bit unknown. I do think that future townspeople will want to use that property. I don't know about the building, but I do think that property, because there's a potential to connect that path all the way over to the rail trail, I think, at some future time. Maybe not right here in this moment in time, but looking way down the line, connecting one side of town to the other would be a really great use of those pathways. There's a lot of pathways in there now, and you can wander through, but I'm not quite sure whose land we're on after a while. So that was where it stopped. The use of the building itself, I know this board discussed possibly at one point, thinking about a lease on it, but then we pulled back from that. And I think for good reason, because until we really know what the townspeople want that building used for, if they want it used at all, we don't want to go too far down that path. You know, this building and the land belongs to the residents of Groveland. It's town-owned property. And it'd be good to get a better idea, especially with that building, on what uses. I think it's been kind of circulated through town departments as to whether they would use it. And right now, I'm not aware of anybody that would. We could certainly push it back out there again. I think... I believe the Council on Aging was asked to take a look at it, but the building is not in great repair. It's not what I would call senior-friendly right now at all. I mean, the stairs to the basement are not quite safe, I would say. So it needs work. I know the building inspector's been through it. It's not... And right now, it's... It's not, right now, it's not, what do you call it? Able to be used, whatever the standing of the building inspector is. You couldn't put somebody in the building in it right now the way it is. But I do think that until we know what uses people think it could be used for, I don't want to necessarily start down a path of leasing the building out and then get stuck in that path and find out that we can't free that building up for another use that's more pressing. That would be my concern. You know, all in all, it's a historic building. If we just wanted to encapsulate the outside of it and look at it and say, "Yep, that's the last of the mill buildings." We didn't knock it down, I guess we could do that. But honestly, we haven't really done a big survey of the town. Certainly, the Rec Committee should weigh in on it, too, to really figure out what uses would be the best idea for this building. I think the point of putting a project in this year was, I thought, just to try and get some work done so that the building, you know, was somewhat fit. You know what I mean? So that if somebody said, "Yeah, we could use it for this or that," it could be used. But I also listened to the CPA meeting, and they had a long discussion on it. Lot of good points were raised on both sides about whether to do something or not do something. The point about determining contamination was a point I hadn't really thought about. And I've never raised that point, so I thought that was a good point to have addressed. But then I also know that we had, there are test wells down that path, a little bit away from the building. And I don't know if that's sufficient to determine that there's no contamination in the soil or whatever around that building. I believe those are still active test wells, right?
They are still being monitored, yes.
That's what I thought. Okay, so and then they're a little bit far from the building, but not that far. I mean, I don't know how close they have to be to tell if the building is contaminated by the valley screw. Is that what we're, is that their concern?
I don't think it's about the actual contamination of valley screw. I think it's more of the building materials that were used during that time and whether or not they had contamination.
Okay, so it's the actual stuff the building is made out of?
Correct.
Oh, okay. Okay, well, then I suppose that would be a valid concern to raise before you decide anything about the building. I don't know. Do you guys have some thoughts on it?
Yeah, because my understanding that that particular property is not one of the three properties that was part of the Superfund site. It's a little standalone property. And what they are considering is everything from the back of that property where the test wells are back, including the church property, our property, which is the big lot that we own next to that one as well. That little property, if you watched the meeting?
Yeah, I did.
They talked a lot about return on investment. And I don't think the town has the ability to get much of a return on the investment. And when you look at West Newbury and their 46 Washington Street, which is, I think, the old Vet Building.
Mm-hmm, yep.
And they put, just sunk $1.5 million into trying to get that looking nice. And as far as I know, it's still not usable, and it's just a money pit. And I think if we have any chance of making that a usable building, I think it's going to be to sell it and to a company that can actually utilize it and effectively turn it into something.
Well, yes, but I think until there's been a decision about the use of that property in general, I don't want to impact-
I think the use is where the zoning is, isn't it?
Well, no, I mean, for recreational uses. That side of Groveland is fairly built up. We don't have a lot of parks and green spaces over there at all. You have VZ Park, which is way up Washington Street, and you have Washington Park, which is great, except if there's baseball, you know, it's pretty packed. You're not going to get in there with your family some days to go to the park because it's highly utilized.
Right, but 46 Washington Street, what is the acreage on that lot?
Well, that's the whole point. We never surveyed it.
So the lot size is .71 acres.
So it's less than an acre. And we own that big lot next to it, which is over six acres.
So we do own parcel 32-25, and that has 6.2 acres. The swimming hole that you're referring to, that is actually not our property. That is property of the Archdiocese.
Yes.
So in terms of recreation, we do have that whole lot there, which is still accessible and still potentially could lead into 150 Center Street if you wanted to continue on trails and stuff.
Correct.
So I think that particular lot, where that building is, is just sat as an eyesaw for a very long time. It really hasn't been utilized other than to park trucks and-
Well, right, yeah, just a second. I think right now, I mean, it's not, nobody is parking there thanks to the no parking sign, so that's nice. We did get some landscaping done. And as I said, if you'd seen it in its original form, it wasn't eyesore. There was junk thrown behind it. There was a lot of debris. So all of that's been cleaned up. The question is, you know, how ready are we to know what we want to do with it? And so that, to me, is where I keep pausing, you know? I don't want to see the town release this property until we know for sure we don't really ever think we'll want it. Because once you let it go, then that's gone. They could build more houses there, you know, all kinds of stuff. But that side of town, that would probably be one of the last little pieces of land that could be a green space and could lead to the trails. So that's what I look at. I look at the high use of the park in that area, highly, highly utilized, lots of young families, a lot going on. And could we coordinate with the church? Because originally, they were talking about trying to sell property at some future point? Sure, I hope so. Are we doing it right now? No, we just kind of hit the pause button because we have a lot of stuff that's not determined. So I think the question from the CPA committee, and Ed, you can correct me if I misspeak, is to have it come back to us to find out, do we want something done with this property this year? And I think that's where Mike might wish to speak to what he thought could be done. Thank you, Mike, for your patience.
Thank you, Kathy. Mike Dempsey, 33 Uptec Road. So I understand what you're saying about the use, but unfortunately, you know, as we all know, government moves very slow. And in this case, the government has been moving very slow. The building's been emptied for nearly five years. And I haven't seen any other department besides the Council on Aging upon looking at the building, possibly considering it, and then deciding that they didn't want to go there. No other use has been talked about. The only proposal that's active, and this is the second year in a row, is from the Groveland Historic Society. So you have an active proposal on the table, and I'm a little upset that this board hasn't at least given it hearing on what exactly it is and what potential benefit it could present to the town. That was part of what was done in the community preservation proposal by the Historic Society, Claire Walsh and myself, about the potential benefits of having it leased to the Historic Society. It enables grants of historical nature to be tapped into that the town can necessarily do, and an alternative funding source other than CPA money or with CPA money to rehabilitate the building. So I would like to request that the Select Board, either tonight or very shortly, start considering this proposal and enter into negotiations with the Historic Society about a lease. A lease doesn't have to be permanent. You could grant a five-year lease, and if it didn't pan out the way that we expect it to pan out, then it goes away. Or if another town use came up and the town needed it for something, again, when the lease ran out, then the town could take it over. I just don't want to be here five years from now and talking about this anymore. I'm tired of it. Claire is tired of it. You know, we've done a lot of work to try to come up with some reasonable proposals about a potential lease and the benefits that could afford the town. And meanwhile, we have to keep driving by the place. You know, that place is unused, sitting there. We have valley screw sitting there, falling in. We have the other brick building and behind it sitting there, you know? And we keep hearing that the town is doing something, the town is going to... And obviously, not all of this is on the town, because valley screw is a crazy situation. And I know Rebecca's been working on it with some other people in Senator Tar's office. But, you know, we do have the opportunity here. Like I say, there's a proposal on the table for at least one of those buildings. And, you know, I'd appreciate at least some hearing on it. Thank you.
Okay. So just to respond, I do know that Mike Dempsey and I met in, what did I say? Was it December? Probably December. And he talked about wanting to lease the building. And I said he would be welcome to come to the board to talk about it. But myself personally, I'm not in favor of leasing out town property, especially if at that time, the proposal would be for the Historic Society to turn around and lease it out to someone else. So I don't see where the taxpayers and the residents that own this property really get any benefit. I don't imagine that the Historic Society is going to be able to pay us any appreciable sum of money. We're still going to have to insure the building. We're still going to be responsible for the building. Anything goes wrong at the building, we're still going to be responsible for that. It's sitting on town land. So to me, the talk about leasing it out as a first step, it would take me a lot longer time to see more about the lease, about how much money the Historic Society was planning to pay to us, whether would that cover the cost of the town, still continuing to be responsible for this building while the Historic Society does work on it and intends to lease it out to an artist or something like that, which is not a bad idea. It's not that it's a bad idea, it's just that I look at all the responsibilities that the town is still carrying. We're still carrying partial responsibility for the insurance at VZ. We still carry responsibility for the house down at Shenahan Field. And I mean, after a while, you have to say, okay, we need to make sure before we jump in and say, "Sure, take this away from us because we're too busy to do it all." We need to make sure what it is we're committing to, and I'm not clear on that. I don't know what the funding would be. I don't know what the Historic Society would be getting for money from their side of it and what the town would get towards the cost of carrying that building, because we'd have to have it insured as an occupied building, which is not cheap. It's not insured at that level right now, I would assume, right? It's not occupied?
Correct. It is vacant property.
Okay. So, I mean, I give our town administrator, you know, many high fives because she's gotten through a lot of backlog of CPA projects in a very fast period of time. And anybody that was at the annual town meeting in the past two years saw that. In fact, I think two years ago, someone said, "Why do we have so many projects coming at once?" And it was because they, as Mike said, we, on the board, we go more slowly. But now we have somebody here, you know, five days a week in charge of our town. They're getting these projects moved a little more quickly. I'm open to what other members of my board feel. I think I've made it clear where I stand on this property, and I'm just one member of five.
I have some comments.
Sure.
I have four points. So first, I'm going to echo what Mike had said. If you look at the area on Washington Street between Center and Main Street, that's a small area, and you have three just abandoned buildings. To me, that's not appealing to the neighborhood. I don't live right there, but it's just not a good look when you go through it. The other piece is the comprehensive master plan that was adopted in October of 2023 actually had a goal specific to revitalizing South Groveland. So it says to integrate the Valley Screw site, which I know is being worked on, Washington Street, 150 Center Street, and VZ Memorial Park into a network of open spaces, neighborhoods, and community amenities. Now, the appeal with that, I can speak as a small business owner. I know we talk a lot about having more business in town, right? That's where we're trying to attract it. My husband and I own a small business in Merrimack. And one thing with the small town is you can't just rely on them to be your source of income. You have to think outside. So part of that is thinking about, okay, what is the appeal that this town has to bring outside people in? Having something like this is part of that appeal. It's part of our history and having, you know, if there's art shows or something that brings outside people in, that benefits the business, benefits Pub 97, the gas stations. So I think it just definitely adds to the appeal and attracts businesses. And the final point I have is about the volunteers. I know that they're energized about this project. I'm afraid if we keep kicking this can down the road, we just are going to discourage them, and they'll throw their hands up, and we're going to lose that momentum. So those are my, I wrote them down.
I think very, very good comments. Yeah. Especially the one about Center Street, because I meant to mention that, that if, you know, if hopefully we get to a point where we are revitalizing that lot on Center Street and getting something in there, it will bring more activity to that side of town. And connecting the sides with trails and things to do is a big deal. And I'll be first to tell you that I know the feeling as a volunteer, that sometimes you feel like, "Why am I still doing all this?" You know, and I thank you, Mike Dempsey and Claire Walsh, for always stepping up. I mean, if we didn't have people like you stepping up and pushing this stuff at us, you're right, it would just fall by the wayside. Nothing would happen. So I guess the point for the board is to just, to see if they're ready to decide something tonight or whether you want more information. But Jason, did you have some comments you wanted to share?
No, I think I made my point pretty clear. I think, I think it's been long enough. I don't think we have the capacity to turn it into something that will be useful or leasable for any type of return on the investment. And I think continuing to pay for the electricity, the heat, and everything in the building that we have for such a long time is really just a waste of our taxpayers' money. I think the lot itself is relatively small, at less than an acre, especially since you talk about open space, and we have over six acres sitting next to it that can be utilized for open space. And I think the fastest way to get the area rejuvenized and worked on is to put it in private hands.
So you want to sell the lot?
Yep.
It's less than an acre.
Yep.
Yeah, I totally agree with Jason. I mean, if you look at, I like history and, you know-
Yep, no, I know.
I'd hate to see it go, but I think if we could sell it and with some stipulations, keep it, you know, semi-historic. But I mean, if you look at the building, it's got two windows in the whole place, so it's, I mean, what are you going to really do in there? But, I mean, thinking about the taxpayers, if we could, we're not going to have the return if we lease it out for some guy for $1,200. And, you know, it's going to cost more than it's worth, I think, but-
So you're leaning towards sell it?
I think that might be the better choice, yes.
Okay, and Ed?
Look, I look at this building as, the building is part of the history of the town. I wouldn't want to see the building sold, torn down. I think in some way, it should be restored and retained in the custody of the town for some sort of usage. I don't know what that would be. But if it's sold, it's going to just get bulldozed over. It's the last, the last mill building, and on any other mill buildings other than Washington Hall, and that really wasn't, that really wasn't a brick building. But the mill buildings have all been burnt and torn down, and this is the last remaining one. And I'd just like to not see it sold, bulldozed over, and something else put up there.
Would you, you sat through the meeting, and you're our representative on the CPA. Are there parts of that proposal that you think should go forward? I thought that was why this was coming back our way.
Yes, there are some parts of the proposal that should continue. And first thing you have to do is say, what's the building going to be? And first thing you have to decide, what's the building going to be used for? And I think you need that. Part of the proposal, there was the, some brickwork to be done, new windows. That stuff sounds pretty reasonable. That's basic. You need to, you need to enclose the building, make it safe. And I don't see a problem, I don't see a problem with that part of it. Even pointing up the brickwork, that should be done. I think, I think you have to hold off on a septic system until you decide what side, what you're going to do with the building. The septic system would need to be done, built basically for what the occupancy of the building would be. You, oh, I think you can start with that. Redo the brickwork. We were in the, tore that the night of the CPA meeting. And it needs to be some concrete work, some, in the building itself and on the outside. It's a pretty sound building. It's not going to go in here, not going to blow over, not in any danger of falling over. But with minimal amount, you could do some work with the windows, the doors, put some usable doors in there, some windows, and do some of the, do some of the brickwork. That's normal with a brick, with a brick structure. You need to point the, the brickwork.
And what about the materials that are in the building? Would you want that checked as well?
The what?
The materials in the building, I guess what it's made out of to see if there's, what asbestos?
There was a proposal for an environmental study on it there somewhere, and.
And that's for the inside of the building?
Well, that was, I think that was for both. I think you want to make sure that the land outside is, there's no pollution there.
Well, I thought we, I thought we already established that this sits on a postage stamp. We're concerned with the materials that the building is made out of. Is that, is that the concern? When you talk about something toxic, Mike, is that the concern? It's what, what's inside the building, the flooring, the whatever's?
Yes.
Not much in the building.
It was asbestos and lead inside the building, lead outside the building. And then was brought up about the Superfund site. We, you know, we can file a 21E on that building and that will check on the history and verify whether or not the site is clean or not. So that could all be done.
Right. I thought, Rebecca, you said already that you're not really concerned in that.
No.
That it's not part of the Superfund site.
Well, the CPC approved an application to move forward just to check the environmental factors of the building.
Okay.
And that was the only thing that they approved to move forward with this application.
Right. Okay, so I didn't see, I didn't see the vote at the end. So Ed, are you just, do you want us to do some kind of a vote tonight to give the better idea of what this board is? I know we're a little split right now.
Some other ideas that you could consider is doing a market analysis for the property so you could see exactly what type of business, if you wanted to keep it business since it's in a business district, to see whether or not there's any, you know, viability. Parking, it takes into consideration transportation routes, and it gives you an understanding of what could potentially be there. You could also look at doing an RFP with a consultant to figure out exactly what you would like to do with the property. What we're doing for 150 Center is an REI. You could go through that process and see what people would be willing to do with it. There's many different opportunities to save the building. Even if you were to do a ground lease, you could write an RFP that says that you must maintain the build or you must keep the, you know, historic structure. But you're able to, you know, make improvements and/or use the property for A, B, and C. So there are different ways that you can, you know, engage with the property and look through those options as well.
Okay. So do we feel that we have time right now, prior to town meeting, to explore this a little further beyond just, so CPC just approved the, basically a contamination kind of study. And Mike said, go ahead, Mike.
Yes, yes. So that was approved. So can, in addition to some of the things that Rebecca's talking about, can we also have Rebecca talk to the Historic Society about a lease? So again, whatever other information she'd present, we'd have that to compare. You would have that to compare with whatever the Historic Society is saying they want to do with it, what they're willing to pay for, what the benefit would be compared to some of the other uses.
Right. Because we haven't seen like any evidence of what the Historic Society.
Yeah.
Hey, like would they cover the cost of the town carrying this building? I mean, that, that would be something I'd want to be interested in seeing because otherwise, I mean, I don't, Rebecca can certainly get together whatever the cost is that we're doing right now to carry this building. It's on the insurance as unoccupied, but we are providing minimal heat and.
We can do that. We just need to be mindful of the conversation with the building commissioner because right now, the building, you cannot occupy the building.
Correct.
So he will need to have an understanding of exactly what use is being put forward before anyone goes in there and pulls a building permit to do work. And the select board as owners of the building must be the ones to sign the building permit.
Okay. So we, there's a lot in our way right now before leasing this building out. I think it's a little premature to jump right to a lease.
I have a question. You mentioned to RFP, like we did with 150 Center Street, the one for 150 Center Street, much larger scale, it's 193,000. What would it cost to do something on a smaller scale?
I would imagine 50,000 or under.
Okay.
I got a just quick question. Tommy, you live right across the street. What would you picture? Like what would you envision and wouldn't bother you, you know, something there? I know. It is a very, very unique building inside, but I'm just curious because he's a neighbor, so.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah.
And once it's gone, it's gone. It'd be like, hey, well, we'd rather take it down City Hall. Roll them maybe regret to take it down the country store down on the bottom of King Street.
Yeah.
If it's gone, it's gone.
Right.
That building, I mean, if it gets sold, again, leave it kind of maybe like it looks, you know, try to keep the outside looking the same and let someone do what they need to do on the inside. I don't know what the inside looks like. I haven't been in it in years.
Yeah, I've been in it's, I mean, it was used.
You mentioned lead on the outside. Where is the lead on the outside?
The paint, maybe?
I mean, flashing on the roof or something?
The brick has lead?
No, I mean.
Just on the paint on the outside.
I mean, they did wonders with the Historical Society building up next to the.
Washington Hall, yeah.
The one across the street, I don't think would cost anywhere near as much to do something with that as what they spent up there. That's a beautiful looking building up there now.
Yeah.
And you're correct, taking the fence down in the back, I mean, it was made a lot cleaner.
Clean it up. I think your husband asked for it to be a brewery. If we could do it, you know. I know.
And lifeguard, they used to keep all the equipment in that building.
Kermit Cross, lifeguard there, yeah.
I don't know why they don't put water back in there because you can't believe the wildlife that's in there when the beaver used to dam it up. Every species of animal on the area would be in there. And then when they drain it out, the turtles would all be flocking around trying to figure where to go and so.
Right. Well, I think that's something that's being worked on.
Yes.
Yes. The dam up above it, leading to the. Right. They removed the boards for some reason. I'm not sure why.
Well, it all went with the pollution up the street.
Okay. Right. Well, when there's water in the pond, it is, it is really pretty. I mean, it's, and there's trails all winding through there.
Beaver there, geese, I mean, everything that lives in the area, it all goes to it.
Right. Yeah. Go ahead, Mike. Oh, oh, Joe. Oh, okay. Town meeting issue.
Mike, Joe Demore, Nine Cherry Tree Lane. Mike, you might remember many years ago, you and I walked the property together. And we won't mention the property. But we worked with someone who was interested in buying that property. And they did have to stick a shovel in the ground and go through a process to determine if it was contaminated. And because it was to some degree, there was some cost estimate that that person walked away. So if this becomes an issue at town meeting, that's fine. But I think what would be helpful is to target occupancy permit. What will the cost be for this town to own that property or for someone else to own it, meeting all the requirements so that whether we own it or whether somebody else own it, occupancy permit will be issued because there could be contamination, there could not be. We don't know what kind of remedial action would be required. It just so happens that this week, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, the Superfund site, federal government is scheduling Groveland to test that whole area. I believe this building is not part of that, unfortunately.
Not this building, but the Valley Screw.
Valley Screw and the ground and the water and the aquifer, all of that.
Right, they still have their test wells there. They took out the equipment, but they kept, they put in new test wells.
Yeah. So I commend you and I agree, I, my personal opinion, I would love to retain the historical character of the building. But we have to know the price tag to allow the issuance of an occupancy permit. Once we know that, well, then maybe we can put that on town meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
I feel like we're going around and around here. I think, feel like we still have more that needs to be found out. Is that, does that make it sound accurate? You want to know, they've approved to do the study of what is in the building that could be a problem. But there were other proposals in to put in the windows and I think the flooring in the basement. And to just, I think, make the building more weather tight. It wouldn't have been, it wouldn't bring it up to an occupancy level, I don't think.
No.
Okay. So the question is, you know, how much was, would it cost to bring it up to occupancy level? And we don't really have a cost on that, right?
I know that the building commissioner has had conversations with Mike Dempsey and others on what it would be, what would be required. But I don't believe that there was ever a fixed cost that was identified because he could not provide such until a use was determined because different uses will trigger different requirements.
Okay. And I know Jason and Mark are concerned that, you know, we don't, the town does not have unlimited funds. And, you know, if we sell it, then it's gone.
So can we maybe just get some, like pricing on, you know, doing the survey to see, you know, what they think they could, you know, what it would be good for? And then just.
I think it'd be helpful, yeah.
How long do you think that will take, though?
By the next meeting, I could get you price estimates as to what would be required for multiple different options, whether it be, like we said, a market analysis, whether or not it be just a, you know, what would be required for occupancy in terms of building upgrades that would be necessary. But I can get you, you know, a very basic simplistic breakdown of what each step would be in terms of what you would need to do.
Does that make sense to everybody?
Because like you said, you can't really build it until you know what the hell's going to go in there, so.
Right.
I mean.
But it's not, it's not like, it's not able to be occupied now is the problem. So.
I'd be comfortable.
Finding out how much that's going to take.
Just take a look at it.
Right.
Like I said, I would hate to see it going down. I just.
And it's probably some of the items listed in Mike's proposal this year that would be part of that.
So.
Okay. What about you, Jason? Is there any more information that would change your mind on?
No, I think, I think it sounds good.
Okay.
Can we also have Rebecca talk to the Historic Society to at least start that process going also?
Well, I don't want to give you a false lead, like start the process of leasing out the building before we know. I think the board is interested in what it's going to take.
It's not so much starting the process of leasing. It is just what, what are the numbers that would require? I mean, right now, you're talking about a lease. It's so vague.
It's very vague.
It's nothing. But, you know, at least putting something concrete together. You don't know what the Historic Society is willing to pay or what they're willing to do.
We don't know.
And so at least we could get that kind of information, which I think would be useful because if you had that in front of you, you may say, no, this is not going to work. Or you may say, yeah, this is worth going a little bit more into. That's all, that's all I would request.
Would you be able to fit that into your schedule at all, a little? Not making it like your whole project for the week?
No, I can have a conversation. I think it's really important to know legally, there's restrictions on what we can do when we offer a lease and how much that lease is and whether or not it triggers procurement thresholds because you just can't allow, you know, an organization that you want to go in there without making it a competitive process. So I think that's really important to the conversation as well. So I'd be happy to do all of that.
Good. Okay. Have we, have we gone around the full circle, I think? Ed, are you, are you satisfied with the discussion tonight? I think we're not done. It will be on the agenda for the next meeting. When is your next?
Sure.
When is your next?
We're going to try to get this, get this done so, have some kind of a decision by the closure of warrants so you can get this on there.
So we'll have it on our next agenda. And when is your next CPC meeting?
But I believe they voted to only allow a portion of the application to come forward.
Yes.
So that would be, so that wouldn't need to be re-voted.
Right, they'd have to re-vote it. But during their.
Wouldn't be anything that you.
When do you march 10th?
This town meeting.
You don't think any of this would be available for this town meeting?
The CPC application that was submitted for the allocation of funds for the environmental aspect, from my understanding, that will be moving forward and that will be requested for the select board to place on the warrant at one of their upcoming meetings. But in terms of what we do with the property, I would imagine that that's not something that would be determined prior to town meeting. I think we could discuss and get all the information, but I'm not sure.
Right. No, I agree with you. I don't think we'll have all that in order yet. But would, like some of the other items listed in the checklist, like the windows being replaced, and I think Ed mentioned the floor or something, if that.
But the CPC removed that from their approval. Therefore, it won't be moving forward. So the CPC puts forward the projects to the select board in town meeting.
Well, I think they removed it, though, because, I mean, at least my understanding, listening to the meeting after the fact, was they were somewhat confused and concerned about what the board wanted to do with this property. You know, like, do we want that work done or not? Are we going to lease it? And you're right, we won't know by March 10th. The question on leasing, and we probably won't have a study on what all the uses of the building could be. But then that would mean that no further work gets done on the building until a year from now. So that's, unless the CPC wanted to reconsider if, if this select board wants some of the other work done. I mean, I guess that's where it comes from. But for now, from understanding you correctly, you want more information and Rebecca's going to get that for our next meeting. Is that?
Well, if you look in the, your paperwork.
Yes.
They have a breakdown of costs for several different projects. And one of them was somewhere in here on, on the repointing of the building. Naturally, you can't find it right away, but it's here.
Right. But that's what, that's the brickwork, right? Is that what repoint?
Yeah. Yeah, here it is here.
Okay.
And they, so they've already, they've already done a lot of work. Getting some of this stuff done. And this was by a stone design out of Byfield. Outside, clean out the joints that are obviously in need of new cement and mortar, repointing. Brick and mortar in holes, in and holes that had fixtures in the past. Repair obvious bricks on the first floor. Solid 40% of stone foundation needs to be repointed. A three-brick column will be washed down and set to dry. A quarter inch stucco with bonding agent applied to all the columns. This job is based on a, on a two to three weeks to complete. The nature of the repair is in multiple areas. And that price was 11,000, 22,500 for that. And what else was it? The asbestos testing. Testing was $600 inspection fee.
Well, that's being, that's going to be done. That's part of the work that will be done.
It's only the environmental.
Correct, correct.
Because the other components were things that would address the building without knowing the use. So if you, if it's not accessible, so it's not a handicap accessible. So if you, if it's not accessible, so it's not handicap accessible, so if you have to make arrangements to the building to facilitate the use, you might be altering the building slightly in order to accommodate whatever use that you're putting into the building. So to do any initial work without understanding what you're using the building for was cautioned because you're not sure if any alterations would be necessary in order to suit the use of the building.
Right. So I think that's, that explains why then they went forward with a proposal that said they would lease it to the Historic Society, was going to prepare it for use by artists, but that would entail the board, the select board voting on a lease that we're not really prepared to vote on at this time, is what I'm thinking and hearing. So should we wait till our next meeting to get more information? We won't have the uses of the building specked out by the next meeting. That's not going to happen. We could have what it would cost to do some kind of a market study to see what uses would be best in that area.
That's kind of what I'm more after, just because...
Yeah.
Figure out what we can use it for.
What could it be used for, right?
Fix the building to that. I mean, just to say you don't need a door on the backside with a stairway going down for, you know, fiery dress.
Right, right.
That's, that's not on any of this paperwork right here, so that's...
No, yeah, I know. And, and there's, there's various aspects of it, trapdoor things that would have to be addressed, so...
It's just, that's...
It's an old building that served a good purpose for a while.
I'm not trying to ruin anybody's day here.
No, I know.
It's just...
So I feel like we need more time. Rebecca said she will talk with Claire. We do have the itemized list that could be added if the CPC wanted to revisit it. And I think that's where it is right now, as far as it's going to go right now, yeah.
Yeah. I, I think that, I agree with what Ed is saying, you know, potentially CPC could reconsider portions of this proposal, such as adding the brickwork, things like that, or the windows that don't really, aren't going to matter what the use is, they need to be done, so...
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mike. And where's Claire? Did she go? Oh, there she is. Hi. Thank you, thank you as well for, I know it takes a lot of time to put these proposals together. And I saw how long the time was at the meeting. It was a long meeting on this one topic. This was the longest topic at your meeting, I believe, this building, a long discussion. Okay, so if we're set for now, we're going to move forward on the agenda? We have a general bylaw review for the 2025 annual town meeting?
Yes. So I had seen last year that when we typically go through our town meeting warrant process, we draft the warrant, it gets submitted to the select board, and you just kind of go through and you make recommendations based on the warrant as it's drafted. And I felt as though with a lot of the different changes that are being presented this year, specifically in terms of the general bylaw as well as the zoning bylaw, and it would make it a lot more of a, a, better process as like we do with the CPC, where we remove those from the warrant and have a conversation about those articles specifically before reviewing the warrant in its entirety, so that when you do go through the warrant in its entirety, you can then start to be like, oh, yes, we had that meeting about this, favorable recommendation or non-favorable. So again, because it was such a larger portion of the warrant this year, I figured I'd break out the general bylaw as well as the zoning bylaw to kind of put those before you, just so that if there was additional information you needed, because again, like last year, there was an issue with the general bylaw that was put forward by the Council on Aging, and that was caught in the last stages. So they didn't really have time to regroup and figure out what they could do in order to pivot and make it work for the town meeting, given the time constraints. And I thought that might be a little unfair to groups who are looking to put things forward. So if we bring that conversation up sooner rather than later, we can invite groups in if you have additional questions, or if there's additional concerns, or if you want us to do additional research, we can do that. So in your packet, you'll see that we have, one, two, three, four. We have five bylaws that are being proposed as general bylaws. The first one is the Town Administrator bylaw. The board had reviewed that bylaw originally that was put forward by the finishing committee. The board had made some additional alterations to the language in terms of removal that select board member Watson had brought forward. So town council had reviewed the document and they really just cleaned it up. They did not remove any of the language that was proposed. They just, from a legal standpoint, as part of the preamble, there was some language about what the duties were that doesn't need to be there. They, they changed a couple of the, the words so that they pointed to the right section or that they were labeled the right, the right section. So what you have before you is the clean version of what town council has reviewed after going through the finishing committee, as well as the first review by the select board. So I don't know if you'd like to pause and take a look at that, or if you'd like me to go through and give you the update on the other bylaws that are included.
Well, myself personally, I mean, we've been working on this bylaw since Bill Dumb was chairman, so I feel like it's as done as it's going to get. I think it's, it's, it looks much cleaner and simpler and straightforward. I think that it makes it clear what the duties of the town administrator are. And it details the day-to-day operations of the town administrator, the personnel, responsibility, procurement, oversight. I don't see that we would have any changes to this bylaw. We've been through this a lot of times. And, and it started out a far more complex document. I think this is much more straightforward and just very easy to understand for a town meeting person, too. You know, they should, it's, it's a lot, you know, it takes, we move slowly. We've had you here for over three years, four years, without something that clearly defines the job. And I think that's, that's not fair to the town administrator. And I think it's time to bring it forward to the town meeting. I don't, I can't imagine that they'll have any problem with any part of this. It's very straightforward and very much like what exists in any other town that has a town administrator. I mean, there's good checks and balances in it. I mean, is there any aspect of this that anybody here is, has issue with? I feel like we've reviewed this thing so many times. Is it, is there any discussion needed on this one, or can we go to the next one? All right, so we'll move on to the next bylaw, so...
The next one is the Council on Aging bylaw. So this was the one that was brought forward by the Council on Aging last year. And there were some concerns that were cited by both the finance board as well as the select board, most notably the removal of the select board in the town from the process of hiring and firing within the department. Most of that is centered around the select board. So with working with the Council on Aging and a representative was selected by the select board, that representative was, was Jason Naves. And then a representative of the finance committee, that member was Jim Scanlon. So they participated in a meeting with the Council on Aging bylaw committee, which consisted of Laurel Pachowski, Deb Stevenson, and Larry McElhany, who's no longer a part of the Council on Aging, but a member of the Friends of the Council on Aging. So understanding the concerns of the select board and the finance board, proposed language that those members felt comfortable with, which essentially gives the department head, the Council on Aging director, the ability to manage the department, but with the oversight of myself to confirm whether or not they can move forward with their suggestions. So that seemed to be agreed upon by all the members participating in the conversation, as well as by town council, because originally the language was a little vague, so we did get them to weigh in. And the proposed seemed to satisfy their concerns in terms of enforcement. The other changes that you'll see in the document remain the same as well, in terms of approving vouchers and payments. They also had cleaned up some language in regards to the members that they have within their, their committee. So submitting proper notice was another type of, you know, not really a big change, but just some language that they were looking to clean up, and a couple of other items like that. So there wasn't really much other, or there wasn't many other changes that they had proposed.
So I just saw one section, I'm just, it'd be nice to get one clean version of this, just to make sure that we're seeing it all, because there's a lot of lines crossed off. And I understand it's a work in progress still. But under, where was it? I'm at a lost place. There was a place where it's crossed out and then, yes. So it would be under three dash fourteen, is that a section? Three dash fourteen? Three ones, I, dash fourteen. Council on Aging, Board, Purposes, Powers, and Duties. The way it reads now with the cross-off, "The Board shall support and oversee the mission and the Director of the Council on Aging." Is that the Council on Aging Board?
So the Board shall support and oversee the mission and the Director of the Council on Aging. Correct.
Okay, so that's the Board referring to the Council on Aging Board?
Exactly. So they're removing...
Okay, okay.
...stat programs and financial planning and giving that to the Director. That, that's their responsibility on a day-to-day level.
Okay.
And they're overseeing the Director. So any issues with the way that that individual determines how to manage the department will be at the, at the discretion of the Council on Aging to say, no, that's not the direction we want to go in. But they're not actually making those decisions unless they have an issue with the way that it's being managed.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions on this? Yes, Ed?
Yes. As I brought it up a, a year ago, for instance, 11117C, Council on Aging Director subject to approval of the Town Administrator, will have the authority to appoint all COA staff, aside from the Director. That, that should be up to the Board of Selectmen to make those appointments. On, on the recommendation of the Council on Aging Director and the Town Administrator, it should be the, the Board of Selectmen should be making the, making the appointments. The only, the only one that, that they don't, it would be, at this point that I know of, is the Board of Health, where they, Board of Health appoints their own, their own people. But this, this still should be subject to the Selectmen.
Well...
And that was a contention, one of the reasons that it was questioned at the last, a year ago, before, before this was presented. That's, I think that's one, one of the reasons it was pulled from the, from the warrant.
Correct. Because the Council on Aging currently can appoint their own staff, as it's written currently. And the proposal was that they would not need to consult anyone being the Director in making those appointments. They could just make them. So they were passing their authority over to the Director to hire and fire as they, they saw fit. And that was, the issue is that there was no oversight by the administration in terms of those decisions. So what they came forward with was the Town Administrator. But if the Board would like to alter the language, we can discuss adding that to be subject to the Board, the Select Board.
And you could also, the, the last, the last several times that we hired a Director for the Council on Aging, the, the Council on Aging had a committee and they, they chose a candidate and it was presented to the Selectmen, and they, they were the ones that, that voted for it. I think the last, maybe the last three that we had. And so even, even the, even the Director should be appointed by this Board.
Can I ask a question? So, yeah, I, I remember, you know, when this came forward and then why, kind of why it went back. But I also know that, you know, we meet every two weeks. And we now have a town administrator. So when you talk about the layers of people that are reviewing applicants, I mean, how many hoops do they have to jump through before we hire them? I know myself personally, you know, yes, do I read through my packet? Do I look at the resume? But I wouldn't have met any of these applicants. I wouldn't have been privy to any of the interviews or conversations with people who were privy to the interviews. So I'm comfortable with the way it's written right now. I mean, unless the whole Board feels strongly that we still have to rubber stamp it, because that's kind of what it is, isn't it? I mean, we're saying that the Council on Aging Director, along with the Town Administrator, the Council on Aging Director has the authority to appoint, the Town Administrator says, yeah, that sounds like a good idea, go ahead. And now we're saying, okay, but come into the Board of Selectmen and make sure they're okay with it. Well, we're, we're going to be okay with it if the Council on Aging Director is good with it and our Town Administrator is good with it. So the only reason I would think it would come to us is if there was some point of disagreement. And I, I've never seen that happen. It seems like we just rubber stamped it. Am I misunderstanding that doesn't the Council on Aging already hire their people?
They do.
Okay. That's what I thought. So now they're going to hire them, the Town Administrator's going to be a, a double check on it, and Town Administrator keeps us informed on who's been hired. So, I mean, it's a nice courtesy to know that somebody's been hired, but I don't feel that we're part of the interview process any longer, at least from where I sit. But I could be wrong. Jason?
Well, I mean, I, I consider the Town Administrator to be an extension of the Board, especially when it comes to day-to-day activities. And it's important that the Town Administrator has the ability to act upon those. I mean, we, we oversee it, we're going to get the results of it. If it's something we disagree with, then, then it's something that we can certainly take up. But, I mean, that's, that's the whole reason behind having a Town Administrator and the whole reason to have this preamble, to allow them to, to act on the day-to-day business that needs to take place, whether it's hiring, interviewing, and working with the other departments is something that they need to do. It's not something that we should be doing.
Becky?
I agree with Jason, yeah.
Mark, what do you think?
Yeah, I mean, reading it, the way it says the Council on Aging Director, subject to the approval of the Town Administrator, yeah, I mean, I agree with Jason.
Okay.
We don't need to make one extra step.
Right. If, if there's ever a problem, right, and they go through the, the process of the Council on Aging Director and the Town Administrator, and they're not satisfied, they, they're able to come to the Board if they ever had to, somebody is, right?
Correct.
Okay.
And then there's accountability factor that I report to you. You're my appointing authority. So if I'm making decisions and things that you don't like, that reflects poorly on me and my employment. So I need to be responsible and transparent with the Board to make sure that I'm carrying forward what it is that you're asking me to do. And if I feel a certain way, then again, you would have to say, well, why did you make that decision? And I would be responsible for answering you.
Right. And, and the Board, you know, we sometimes have like a member of the Board like Jason, and sometimes I think it was Ed, too. I've, have on occasion volunteered to go and, and work with various departments when there's something going on and, you know, we feel like they could discuss it and come up with a resolution. I mean, this is a resolution to the bylaw that was put forward and then pulled back, right? So, yeah, I mean, I think it's, I think it reads very well. And again, it's nice that it's more, it's simplified. And it, and makes it clear that, you know, the Council on Aging gives it their, their autonomy to do their job and just, you know, they're working with the Town Administrator while they're doing that. That's good. So do we need to, yes, Ed, go ahead.
Well, I just, I, I disagree with you. I don't think we should, you mentioned about the interview process and we, and we don't get involved in the interview process.
Right.
But, so if I, if I'm hearing you correctly, you want the Council on Aging Director or the Board to, to appoint the, their own people. Are you also going to follow that up with, like, we, we appoint the members of the Highway Department, the Police Department, the Library employees, you know? We, we vote at, at meetings and for different employees. So we, we vote the majority... you know, we vote at meetings and for different employees. So we vote the majority of the employees for the town, and I think that this is circumventing the Board, that if it's going to be okay for the Council on Aging Board to come up with their employees, well, are you going to follow that up with the Library and let them appoint their own without, because they always come before the Board of Selectmen to appoint pages or employees. Just as an example, the Police Chief submits the police officers that are voted in by the Board of Selectmen, the Highway Department, the Water Superintendent, even though they have a Board, we still weigh in and we make the vote. Are you going to include all of the others?
No, I think the Town Administrator bylaw covers that, but it's not just myself, Ed, it's the other members of this Board. I, my understanding of the Council on Aging was that they already had some authority or autonomy from us as, under the law.
They currently do under the bylaw. They can appoint their own staff, being the Council on Aging, so they can vote to hire their Director, their Assistant Director, their van drivers, or their outreach worker. They have involved the Select Board in the past in that process, but under the actual bylaw itself, they are not required to, they do have appointing authority.
So this is actually at a step that keeps us involved, because they don't, they don't have to. I mean, if they want to, as the Fire Chief did when he hired the first full-time firefighters, he brought them before us and said, you know, I have the authority to hire them, but I wanted to include you in the process. So I think this would just make sure that, that the Town Administration is involved in the, because from what our Town Administrator just told us, if we don't put this in place, the bylaw that currently exists basically allows them to go and hire without us anyway. Does that make sense?
No, but, go ahead.
No, I agree with you. I mean, it can be very confusing. A Board of Health is definitely a separate structure, and Council on Aging is governed by a separate bylaw. And again, they did not involve us in some of their hirings. But now, if they are in agreement with this bylaw, that would keep us all connected, is the way I look at it, that we would be connected in the process through our Town Administrator, so that's helpful. If we don't pass this, and they want us to pass this, then we're shooting down their bylaw, second time in a row, when they want it. You know, I think, I think it's good if Jason's met with them, you've met with them, and everybody seems to be in agreement, I would agree with it. Are we okay to move on? Yes? Is there another bylaw beyond this one?
So the next one we have is the driveway bylaw, so we currently do not have a bylaw for the creation of driveways, so a lot of different times, what will end up happening is somebody will construct a driveway, and the slope will lead to runoff issues within the roadway, sight distance issues, they'll have multiple driveways on one particular lot, they'll be very close to a budding property line, so this is a bylaw that was proposed and drafted with the Projects and Programs Manager, Arthur Marcos, to allow for some of the specific requirements for moving forward with the ability to construct a driveway. And you'll see there's a lot of design requirements, so about how the apron shall not exceed 24 feet in width, it must be configured to a 90-degree angle on the prop, with the property line, so there's a bunch of different requirements that are being proposed to ensure that there's no impact to the surrounding area and our roadways.
A question on E. The grade of the driveway may not exceed 10% for a distance of at least 20 feet from the property line under the lot. 10% seems like an awful steep grade in a driveway.
I can talk to Arthur about that and have him respond with the reasoning behind such, or where-
I don't know what it is on a street, and I think it's less than that, on the construction of a street.
Being the roadway for-
Yeah, and I should know that, but it's slipping me right now. I don't think it's, I don't think it's 10%. Yeah, ask him.
I can get clarification.
My old driveway was really steep on Rocky Woods. Whoa.
Going up the hill, I mean, there's nothing to do about it, really.
That's more than 10%, huh?
That's all I mean.
So I can ask for additional clarification and get that information to the Board. And the next bylaw is in regards to illicit discharge, and so that, again, is in regards to our roadways, and whether or not people are putting their runoff from their households onto the roadway, as we've seen more recently with the weather and the dropping temperatures, there's a lot of icing that occurs, and so this is to establish fines and enforcement to, again, make sure that residents know that they cannot discharge water onto our roadways.
I'm not seeing that one. I see the driveway.
The back.
Did we go past it, to the driveway?
No, it's on the last part of the driveway.
Oh.
Right after the driveway.
Oh, it's part of the driveway, wasn't it?
Yeah, it's short.
Right after, it's very short.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay, thank you. Sorry, I thought we were on different bylaw.
Just a question on that, prohibiting the discharge of water, and it's listed from November 15th to April 1st. They shall not discharge the groundwater, pump the water onto the town. Why would you allow it during other times of the year? And we have, we have places in town that people pump out the groundwater during the summer out onto the roadway, or even discharge their swimming pool prior to November 15th out onto the roadway. I don't know why it wouldn't be just disallowed at all times.
So we do have an stormwater bylaw that talks about illicit discharge and putting water into our municipal stormwater systems, but this one was more so aimed at the hazards of the weather conditions that are created, whereas the others don't necessarily impact the operation of the town and are governed under a different bylaw, but I can get some more clarification on that as well.
Well, I just think it's, even in the summertime, if you have an accumulation of water that's not caused by rain, and on some of these streets, if people going down through at the speed limit and they hit an accumulation of water, this is a dangerous condition. And, so, that's, they're just charging the water, that could be from January 1st to December 31st. It doesn't matter what time of year, it could be a dangerous situation.
That makes sense. I can get some clarification on that.
Are we done with the driveway bylaw? Okay, so the next one is, it's going to be a favorite, removing the snow from the sidewalk in front of where you live.
I'm happy to see this one, because that was going to be a question, because I walked home from Chesterton last week, and I know some of the sidewalks were cleared and some of them weren't. I was curious, so.
So as part of that, we had gone through the bylaw after the latest snowstorm, and there was, there were individuals who were dumping snow into the public right-of-way, and we were certain that there was, that we had a bylaw, so we wanted to just confirm, and so we did confirm that we have a bylaw in place for the placement of snow in the right-of-way. However, we noted that we did not adopt the Massachusetts General Law that allowed us to ask that or require that property owners clear the sidewalk that, right in front of their homes. And so what the intent is, is not to overburden homeowners, but the fact that we have only four laborers who are out there who are plowing, which is the main goal, is to get the streets, the main streets and the side streets done, and then to go back with the plow for the, or the snow plow for the sidewalks, and whether or not there's poles in the way, or whether or not they need to get the machine out. I know more recently, the ice has caused a lot of issues, and trying to get the machines to function properly has been problematic, so this would just add another ability to try and clear the snow more quickly and efficiently, as we all kind of come together to make it happen. And this is something that's been done in a lot of other communities, so it is not new, and it is something that just requires the town to adopt the Massachusetts statute that allows us to do so.
So what is the consequences if they don't do it?
There is no monetary enforcement of anything.
Yeah, so it's kind of like a goodwill thing. We had that in Framingham, when we lived there years ago, so we had to shovel our sidewalk.
Well, a lot of times too, you'll see in other communities that residents are asked to help clean out fire hydrants when the snow is there, because you wouldn't exactly spend all the monies, taxpayer dollars of having, you know, the firefighters and/or the highway clean out every single hydrant that's out there. So again, it is more of an effort to try and do the best we can. It's not to say that the highway crew doesn't go out there and do the sidewalks and doesn't, you know, try and get the, make sure that the hydrants are clear, it's just that there's only so many hours in the day, and we don't have that many on staff to do that.
Right, okay.
Is there something for the hydrants, for clearing the hydrants? Is there any sort of bylaw for that, or is that just a, no, it's just a courtesy?
Okay, so, and we already talked about the illicit discharge bylaw that follows, and so that's the end of that?
Correct.
Right, okay.
And I'll speak with Arthur Marcos and get the additional information that Ed had brought forward, and get some clarification, just so that you're aware, and make any amendments if necessary, so that you'll see these on the warrant when you go through to review.
Okay. But on the snow clearing, they'll still get the sidewalk plow out as they can, you know, to assist the public. Okay, yeah. Okay. So I think next is our food composting program? Is that right, or am I tr-
Yes.
I'm, okay, great, then we'll move to that.
So we received an RDP grant for composting, and as part of that initiative and efforts for us to move forward, we need to have the Select Board approve a program. So in your packets, you'll find a program that was drafted and resembles some of the programs in the surrounding area. We did not receive a lot of money to initiate this program, but we do think it's enough to expose some of the benefits, and that we can track those benefits, so that we can see exactly how much tonnage we're diverting from our waste stream by composting. So in efforts to move forward, the MAS DEP and the RDP program would require a vote of the Select Board on the program as drafted and provided to the Board.
Okay, so the program is based on people coming forward and volunteering for the program, right?
So we would have, we have like $2,000, I think it's $2,100 that we have to help purchase starter kits that we would then provide to residents, and the residents would then be able to proceed with composting at their home, but they would be required to pay for the services that they're receiving.
Correct.
We're only offsetting the cost by providing the kits, and based upon the success, we can further that, whether we buy more kits or whether or not we start to encourage composting and subsidize that program through our trash budget.
Yes. Okay, so I know the startup kit is expensive, it's like $80, so that would be a good incentive for someone who's considering trying to do it, to be able to not have to pay the $80. And I don't know what the weekly charge is, I do the, every other, I know that's like $16 to have it picked up, which is nice. I mean, I've just been curious to see what it would be like to do this. And it does reduce a lot of the trash that I have. The heaviest barrel that I roll out is my compost bucket, because I put all the food and meat and everything else in there. So I'm learning. Yeah, so I think, I don't know, I think it's worth a try to see, some people mentioned in the survey questions, I know we don't have them all summarized, but I remember seeing there was, some mentioned people were interested in learning more about it. Some people said they don't want to compost, fine, you don't have to. Some people said they already were composting, and then some people said they, probably they're like me, I was like, what does it mean, what do I have to do? The thought of having to do it in my backyard was a little too daunting for me. The thought that I could put it in a bucket and roll it to the curb, well, that was reasonable. The other thing that, I don't know if Black Earth will make it available to the town if we do a pilot, but it's available to me, they do somehow estimate the weight of what they're picking up in my compost bucket.
Yes, they will be able to track that, and like we said, we will then be able to figure out exactly how much waste we're diverting through the tonnage that's being-
Right, so we get, that's the only way we'll ever get data on, is it worth it or not, you know, for people that don't want to do their own backyard composting, or don't have the space to do it, what about this?
And it'd be first come, first served, just as we've done with some of our other programs, such as the green barrels and the other composting yard bins that we have, and it would be 50 participants for year number one and 50 participants for year number two, and then we'd be able to generate exactly whether or not there was enough interest, and whether or not we could continue such, and how we would fund, whether or not we would offer rebates for, you know, those who take advantage of the program on the trash side of things, et cetera. So there was a lot of opportunities to expand the program, but this would be the first step to see whether or not there was enough interest to move forward with it.
And there's no-
What's the cost by, by this company?
Sorry?
A month pickup.
So it depends on which service you elect for, so you can get weekly pickup, bi-weekly pickup, monthly pickup?
I can look, it would depend. I got them on there. I might be able to gather it up, it was pretty quick. I just don't remember what it was. I forget my next word. Might be it? No. Never mind, I'll go to the regular site. Just a second. I'll go to regular. We had a thing running on the television with Black Earth. I don't know if we gave all the things. Black Earth composting, yeah.
I went on the website and saw the plans, but I don't know if you have something different.
No, no, that's the plans. I'm just, I know it's $16 for me, I think, every other week.
Yeah, it says, every other week, pick up $16.99 a month.
Yeah, $16.99 a month.
I got 30.
And a weekly would be $20.99 a month. They do, if you pay for the six months, looks like it's a little bit less.
You get a little discount, you pay up front six months, and then you do have to pay for the bags that go in the, they give you the small bags for collecting the scraps in your kitchen, and then they give you the other bags to put in the bin, and then I also recommend that you put a secure trash liner in the bin that you keep outside for that, when it leaks a little bit, because the bags they give are thin.
Yeah.
But, so it's like $20, $21 a month for weekly, and $17 a month for bi-weekly, and then you buy the liners that don't cost that much.
Some of those are included as part of the startup.
Yep, the startup kit includes that, that's true, that's true. So, I'm, I'm having fun with it, but I'm curious to see how much I divert. But my compost bin is heavy, my trash can is light.
Well, I might be able to give you a little insight. In Hamilton, they put a pilot for food waste program for 600 households in 2010. In 2012, they implemented a three-sort program townwide, which basically, a three-sort program is where the residents use separate containers for trash, recycling, and food waste.
Oh, neat.
The curbside collection of trash is limited to 135-gallon standard cart. Every week, residents have access to additional bags, at a cost, of course.
Overflow, yeah.
Overflow bags. Recycling was unlimited, but they had to use their own containers. Recycling was unlimited, but they had to use their own containers.
Okay.
The program was implemented in 2012, where they claimed to have seen a decrease by 30% in the first year in tonnage being delivered to the, to the waste. And they also claim here, and their information is available on the Hamilton website, that there was no dumping illegally. There was no significant increase in dumping illegally, is what they said.
Yeah, I think most of the programs that we looked at said the same thing.
Yeah, so it's, it's, it's very interesting that a town has been doing it for, I don't know, 13 years. And I'm sure they have very large families in Hamilton as well.
Right. No, so, but Rebecca does need a vote from this board. This, so there's no outlay of funds from the town?
Currently with this program, the initial startup, no. It is fully funded, being what we're putting forward with the starter kits from the RDP grant that we received for about $2,000.
Okay, so, do we, are we in favor of allowing, oh, yes, Jen, come on. Jen's on our trash and recycling, yes, thank you.
Jan Dem C 33, Uptec Road. Just wanted to mention that Black Earth is, as Kathy's doing, already in town. And there's a number of families that are already doing the composting. And it's also at Bagnell School.
Oh, that's right.
So we do have like a pilot already kind of going. So this is a great addition to be able to include more families. And basically, the food waste is about 40% of your trash.
It's a lot.
So thanks.
Yep, I cleaned out my fridge today. Well, you learn, now you get used to when they're going to pick up and that would be the day you clean out the fridge. And, yep, put it all out the curb. So, do we have a positive vote to let this pilot go forward? Because I think it's, I think it's really great.
I'll make a motion to allow the pilot to, to go forward.
I'll second that. Any more discussion? There'd be none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor? It's unanimous. Okay, so next I think is the update from me and Jen's here too, our vice chairman on the Trash and Recycling Committee. So, we've been working with our, our technical advisor, Brian Walsh. We had a good meeting and I know Becky is generously, to clean up the remaining data. Thank you for that, we really appreciate the help. So we do have the survey results, we're just going to add the new, I think like 100 additional came in, 100 additional responses and we'll add those so that when we present like the summary, it has all the data in it. And I think you all saw the initial 500 and, or was it 600 results? So now we're up to what, 700 results, is it approximately?
I believe so.
Yeah, so, it's, that's a pretty good amount of input from townspeople about what they think they can do. I mean, I, I look at it and I wish some of the questions we had asked differently because we didn't separate the 96 gallon recycle bin from the 35 gallon trash bin. And so, we got only one response on that. But people did say that they didn't have enough room in their recycling bins. So that leads me to think that they probably would like the bigger recycling bin. And in fact, I've been looking through, there's a survey that the state does across all the towns in the state. And I do see that many are using the 96 gallon recycling. That's not uncommon at all, that's more common. And it's becoming increasingly more common because as these contracts come due, like especially the ones that are coming due after the pandemic, that's where you're seeing the biggest changes in what towns are doing. Another interesting thing that I, that I noted in looking through like the survey across the whole state is that many, many, many of the small, smaller towns like us or even smaller than us actually do not have curbside trash pickup in their town budget. They do some kind of a drop off because they're small enough to still keep going that way. So, I think, you know, we have to be careful as we try to look over the fence and see what our neighbors are doing to compare apples to apples, to compare curbside to curbside. And the, the 35 gallon carts are out there. They're not as prevalent as the 64 gallon. And so, you know, we don't want people to feel they can't get rid of their trash. So, the committee is looking at all kinds of options. The reason that we're looking at perhaps two 35s is because we have a question into our technical expert, Brian Walsh, that would we still be eligible for some of the grant money that ties to the 35 gallon cart? If we went with two 35s for people that wanted more capacity? Because we just, if you go to the 64, I think we've pretty much been told we will not be accessible to the grants. Which, okay, you know, maybe that's why Boxford went to the 64 for trash, but they're charging their residents $175 a year annual fee for trash. That might explain that annual fee. Because they're not getting access to the grants to help with the carts. So, we're looking at all that. We're, we're going to have a public information session. It's tentatively scheduled for March the 13th, I believe it's a Thursday, right? And you check the middle room is open, so we'll be posting for that. And the goal of the public information system session would be to allow people to come in or zoom in and Brian will be there. He's going to present again some of the data that you've already seen about the landfills, about the capacity in the state is being reached. We're coming to the end of the line on landfills in the state of Massachusetts, which leaves just the incinerators. And then beyond that, would end up with trash being trucked out of the state. And Brian did confirm that even at this time in our state, there, there are trucks leaving the state with trash, taking it to other states where they can facilitate it because our state can't take it off. So, any effort to divert is generally regarded as a very positive thing by the state. And that's where the incentives and grants are located. So, you know, again, we want people to buy into this, we want them to be happy with the trash services. We definitely want to have a contract that allows for better customer service and I think Rebecca has already been working on that steadily. There's complicated things called liquefied damages or something that we didn't have before, but these would all be things that would hold whoever is our hauler accountable for when the services are not what we anticipated or what we expected. So we were looking towards a contract that will have standardized carts and have better customer service and also be efficient and cost effective for the town so that we're not running out of money. So, we are looking to that, um, one of the, so Brian will be handling that side of it. I'm going to be putting together some information about, if you look just at the side of our budget, and you know from sitting in these chairs, that the amount of money in our town budget that we actually have control over, that we can reduce if we had to, to balance our budget, is very small. It's probably maybe only 30% when you take out insurance costs and our assessment for retirements. So when you look at the amount of money that now trash occupies in that small, small piece of pie, years ago, 10 years ago, trash was about 11% of that what I call discretionary funding. The funding that we can give to the highways, to the police, to the library, the things we have control over that aren't assessments. And now it's creeping up at about 20%. And with the forecast from our technical expert telling us to expect costs to continue to escalate with trash, it's concerning. That we, we worry a lot about the school budget, but this is another budget that's escalating very quickly. So, our hope is to, to bring it under control and bring forward a program that everybody can buy into. But, you know, we'd like every member of the board to come to the information session as well if you're available. And any ideas you have that you want us to incorporate into that session? Because I know you wanted more public interaction from our, our working committee. And we are just advisory, so everything we do, everything we collect, will be coming back to this board for decision. Okay, but we're still a year and a, not quite a year and a half out, but a year and one-third out from when we would have to enter into another contract. Did anybody have any questions at this time?
I have one quick question. The overflow bags, how much does that hold? Are they?
They're pretty good size, they're just not really strong. They're not like a hefty bag.
Right, right.
The ones I have at home, I, I want to say they're, they're good sized, they're big.
I think it's a 32 gallon?
Yeah, they're, they're good sized.
Well, I was wondering, just, so I know if you, we do the 35, for example.
Yeah.
Rather than getting another 35 and paying that fee, some people may just buy the overflow bags, right?
You could go with overflow, yep. Yes.
But that costs the town more money, right? Because they have to get out of the truck to pick those bags up? I'm just trying to.
No, I think at our last meeting, we actually had an interesting discussion about this, Jen. Was it, was it David who talked about the fact? Yes, oh, Stephanie, David said from our Board of Health said that, you know, he's familiar with the overflow bags.
Right.
A lot of times what they'll do is put the overflow bag, like the lid of the can will be up a tiny bit.
Yep.
But it will be because of the overflow bag.
Okay.
So then the, the arm of the truck can pick the whole thing up and dump.
Okay.
And we have yet to renegotiate nor have those conversations. So currently, they will pick them up at no charge.
Okay.
Right.
All right. It was just a thought I had earlier today, just wondering how that would, if it would end up costing the town more money just because someone didn't want to rent the second barrel, right? So just thinking about.
Right, and another, another thing that might be appealing to folks, some of the towns that have gone automated, when I look at, the statewide survey has a massive amount of data. And it tells you how many days of the week they pick up in, in those towns. And it's not five days a week.
Right.
So you don't have the trash trucks going up and down the roads every single day of the week. That might be something that would appeal to folks as well, to not, to be able to, you know, consolidate the trash pickup days. And then some of the towns are going to every other week for the big recycling container. Yeah, yeah. So these are the things that we're seeing that we're going to, you know, put out there, see what people have to say, have the carts there, have people talk about it. We're just trying to be as flexible as possible and give people lots of choices.
So, I got, I guess we'll just say it's a comment.
Okay.
You know, because.
Let me have it.
It's kind of a question comment type thing.
The way you say it makes me want to inch my chair over.
Coming out of my road the other day over here, Marjorie Street.
Yeah.
One Marjorie.
Yeah.
It's the, I don't know what you, it's a handicap house or whatever.
Okay.
They have nine barrels.
Interesting.
And I think there's only five people living in that place. Nine barrels, almost every week. Is there?
We're supposed to be at two barrels.
I'm, I'm aware, I'm just saying, so like, is there a?
We have very little.
What's going to happen there?
Well, you know, Mark, that's a good question. I mean, from the time that we implemented the rule to bring down the barrels to two, we, it was more of a, people had to do it out of their goodwill. You know, they had to say, okay, the town wants two barrels only, what can I do? Some people have done it, so I've seen some of the overflow bags. But I think until you go to a standardized pickup, it's, it's not really enforceable because given the different size of barrels, you know, two 32s equals 64, but nine.
We can follow up and see whether or not it's, if it's private or if it's public too.
Well, that was my next question. Can we request that they get their own dumpster? Because it's kind of a.
Yeah, many they should.
It's kind of like a, you know, it's a federal, federally funded thing, but.
Nine barrels is excessive. But they would also question, are they doing recycling? Recycling, whether you like it or not, and I mean, right now, cost wise, we're not really saving a lot from it, but it's mandated. Recycling is mandated by the state.
That's, that's why I'm just.
So they're not recycling.
Bringing it out to you guys because I, I drove by, I go, what the heck?
Well.
Yeah, I would have expected it to be private because it's a business.
That's true, I don't know.
You know, I mean, the sub shop across the street's got two dumpsters.
Not the trash, I would know the difference.
The trash pickup, I mean.
And I don't know if the other one up on View Hills the same way or, you know, there's.
We can follow up and get an answer.
I was just curious.
Because they would be held to the same standards. If it was not private pickup, they would only be allowed to put in two barrels.
Right.
Right.
Just, you know, putting it out there.
Right, because we don't do trash pickup for the businesses in town that I'm aware of.
Correct.
Right.
And we don't do trash pickup for the condominiums in town. And we won't be doing trash pickup for the new apartments that they're building off South Street. So, there's, there's increasing numbers of communities within our community that are paying for trash pickup that don't get trash pickup.
Right.
You know, so.
No, like I said, I was just kind of putting it out there.
That may need to be an adjustment to our bylaws. Because I know that, when I was reading through the Hamilton thing, that's the one thing that they said, units of four or less was part of the public pickup. Anything over that was not, it had to be private.
Did we have discussion about having to have a bylaw we might have?
So we have a by, we have a bylaw, but it only references recycling. So we could add to it. And then there's also the Board of Health regulations, so it would be in there as well. But there are, there is an ability, as Jason had mentioned, to, to proceed with bylaw changes.
Okay. Well, so that's, that's where we are, that's where we're going. Everything's, you know, there's a lot of information.
Just a comment?
Sure, go ahead.
If you talk to the, if you talk to the workers for the different companies, and I've done that, you get a, you get a, you get a pretty good perspective. And they tell me that the, that the municipalities that have gone to 96 gallon recycling containers, that majority of those are picked up every two weeks rather than, than every week. And they, they did have a complaint about the 35 gallon containers. And, and basically with the 35 gallon, the, the people try to get everything in there. So they're crunching that down, they're taking some kind of a device and they're smashing it down inside its whole fit.
Yeah.
Especially like dirty pizza boxes.
Yeah.
It gets stuck in it because it's a small container. And then, when they use the automatic arm to dump it, they can't get it out.
Yeah.
So now they gotta, now they gotta start fishing it out or just leave it for the people to do it and they won't do it. So, you can't throw those dirty pizza boxes in the recycling, so people throwing them in the trash. Not with the grease. Yes. So, that's just a thing to think about. With the 35s, the, the people overload them.
You gotta break it.
Some of them you can't get them out.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you have to cut down the boxes.
Cut them down. So, anyway, that, that's where we are with it all. And, and definitely, you know, we'll bring forward all the same information to this board that we're bringing to the information session. But if you have some thoughts or questions that you think we should bring out to the information session, please let us know. Right now, we're just, in between the meetings, Rebecca's going to be compiling an outline of the topics and what we're going to cover.
And what are the dates on that?
On March the 13th, I think it's a Thursday night.
And I know, I think I mentioned it before, I think something that would be helpful is.
At 6:30 PM.
Giving some sort of overview of, you know, some people, they, they just want it to stay as is. What does that look like financially, right? And then changing, I know that might be.
Change is always difficult.
Right.
I think the difficult part will be, and maybe Brian can explain it better or maybe perhaps Rebecca from the hauler meetings, but looking at the contracts, like I've been going through the state database and looking at contracts that are flipping over. I, I have yet to find one that's not automated.
Right.
I can tell by the customer charge and the barrel size that they're going automated. Because these trash companies, they, they won't bid, they won't put a proposal in. It's too, we, there's a, there's a, there is an information thing that I have to bring out about that. That talks about Waste Management produced a flyer that talks about the liability for them, for their workers.
Yeah.
To get out of the truck and pick up, you know, a trash can or something, not knowing what's in it or how heavy it is. And the injuries and things that are being sustained. And they're just not willing to put up with it anymore because there are plenty of towns that are willing to buy the carts and automate. So, the towns that don't have those carts are typically, a lot of the small towns, that still allow people to go drop it off somewhere or to make their own private arrangements, like they do in Merrimack. Georgetown has a transfer station, Merrimack has some other situation where you negotiate your own terms. So, you know, as we try to compare and see what other towns are doing, we have to be really careful. you know, as we try to compare and see what other towns are doing, we have to be really careful to look and pick a town that's comparable to us, and also to recognize that even if you see they have a lower price on one thing, their tonnage cost might be a hundred and ten dollars a ton, and we're not paying a hundred and ten dollars a, a ton yet, right? No, we're not there yet, but other towns are, so there's a lot of other hidden, hidden costs, and I think, um, what we're moving towards is more like what you said, Ed, is that Rebecca is, is taking time to talk to people in the industry, and she's sorting through the information that she's gotten from us and from the Haller meetings and from the state, and she's, you know, will be basically doing something that's more like a request for proposals than something that just goes to the lower, lowest bid, and I think, in fact, it might have been Boxford that stated even that in their, when they negotiated their last contract and they went with Mello, they said it wasn't the lowest bid, but the customer service aspect of that company was important to them, and that company had a very good customer service, um, rating or review. So, that's where we are, and unless you have any more questions, we'll just keep moving forward, but if you come up with thoughts for us, please send them our way. We have, next on the agenda, a resignation from Amanda Benneker from the Recreation Committee effective February twelfth. We need a motion to accept.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation from Amanda Benneker from the Recreation Committee.
Yep, and that's effective February twelfth, twenty twenty. Any discussion?
I just have one, so they're down now to just three members?
Correct.
So it's a five-member board, so, okay.
They can still meet and they have a quorum, but we are actively looking for members, if anybody's interested in, in joining the committee.
All right.
That's what I was trying, I was baiting you for that, thank you.
All right, so the rec, let's just say that out loud again, so how, the Recreation Committee is a five-member committee?
Five-member board.
And they only have three members now?
Correct, they have two vacancies currently.
Okay, so that's a fun committee. How often do they meet?
They meet monthly, and they've really taken on a lot more of an active role in trying to plan recreationally for both active recreation and passive recreation with the trails and things of that nature, so, um, they could definitely use some additional assistance.
Okay, so, anybody who's, any of the ten people that are watching our television program tonight, make sure you volunteer for the Recreation Committee, it is, it's a fun committee, there's nice people on it, yep. Okay, so if you know of somebody that might want to do it also, please reach out to them. And, um, before I call for the vote, I want just to thank Amanda for, um, the service and for volunteering, and now I'll call for the vote, all in favor? It's unanimous, thank you. Um, we have approval of the minutes, the select board minutes for January sixth, twenty twenty-five. Have a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve select board meeting minutes for January sixth, twenty twenty-five.
I wasn't there.
You weren't there.
Oh, I'll second it.
Second it, okay, any discussion?
Yep.
Okay, um, I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Yep.
Four in favor, one recused, right, because you weren't there. And then those are approved, approve the select board meetings for executive session, January twenty-first, twenty twenty-five.
I'll make a motion to approve the select board meeting minutes for executive session, January twenty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Yes, okay, and, and discussion on that, I think we are all there for that? Right?
Yep.
I'll call for the vote, all in favor? It's unanimous, are these now public?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so these were the executive session minutes for, um, negotiation of our fire chief's contract. Okay, next on our agenda is older unfinished business, anybody have anything? Other items not reasonably anticipated? Nothing? And town administrator time.
Thank you, Madam Chair, so I have a few town hall operation updates, um, first and foremost, my apologies, my hope was to get you the budget book this evening. Um, I'm having an issue with ClearGov, which is the platform we use to enter our budget and helps us formulate our digital budget book that we can then print and provide you all, um, so I'm now trying to assemble it myself without utilizing the software, so it's just taking me a tad bit longer than I had hoped, um, but it is officially somewhat completed. Uh, the proposed budget leaves a balance of twenty-six dollars, um, and that does not include the full request for the Pennsylt County Regional School. Um, as you'll see in your packets that were released on Thursday, um, and printed for you today, that is the Pennsylt County Regional School District budget request for fiscal year twenty-six. You'll see that they're asking for a seven point two percent increase over last fiscal year, which is about eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars, uh, in addition to what we already set aside for them, so with the proposed budget, I have included an estimate of a three percent increase over last fiscal year, which is about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and that leaves us again with twenty-six dollars in the black. If we were to include the seven point two percent increase, we would be short by five hundred and sixty-five thousand, six hundred and eighty-seven, and that's all in requests. So that brings back all of the stipends and all of the requests by the departments. Um, so again, hopefully, we will be able to get that to you by the end of this week, so that you will have all of that information, and if there's any additional questions you have, please feel free to let me know. Um, additionally, that being noted, on February twenty-fifth, a week from today, they will be holding the school committee meeting to discuss the budget request that was put forward by the superintendent, um, there could be discussions on scaling that back and whether or not that will still fit within our budget, obviously, at a three percent, we're, we're kind of maxed out, anything more would require us to cut our budget in order to accommodate, and when you're talking about cutting a budget beyond, you know, fifty thousand dollars, you're talking about, um, massive cuts. You're not just talking about one position, if one position is only maybe, you know, seventy thousand dollars, you're gonna need to come up with more in order to accommodate, so that's something to take into consideration, and, and hopefully, the school committee will take that under advisement when they're discussing the budget for, um, next fiscal year. And I do know that that comes at an expense to them as well, they have staff in operation and they need to, um, have funding in order to, to maintain their level of service, so uh, it's not an easy conversation to have, but again, just to remind you all, that will be happening next Tuesday, the twenty-fifth, at, um, Pennsylt County Regional School. The next update is about the zoning changes, zoning changes and amendments, like we did similar to this evening with the general bylaw, I'm hoping to have the zoning bylaws before you at your next meeting, the planning board is scheduled to hold their public hearing as they're required for zoning bylaws that, changes that are being put forward for town meeting, um, on March fourth, um, so they will initiate the conversation at that meeting, I'm sure that some of the smaller items might be voted on at that meeting, but there might be some more complex issues such as the MBTA three A zoning, zoning that's being putting, put forth, so I'm sure there'll be a separate meeting in March where there'll be additional conversation. And then also to note, while not a zoning change, um, we do have two street acceptances that will be coming forward at this annual town meeting. One for Billis Way, which was not done correctly last fiscal year, and the other would be Katy Lane, so they are moving forward with submitting all of their necessary documentation, so that will go before the planning board, will be recommended to the select board for the laying out of the way, and then recommended back to the planning board. For the annual town meeting warrant, I'm currently in the process of assembling the warrant, there are still a lot of, um, placeholders, so we're still trying to finalize the document, I have given myself a timeline of getting the initial draft for review to council by the end of the month. I think I'm being a little too ambitious, if I may be honest, so it might be closer to the beginning of March to get over to town council, but I am working to try and get that document buttoned up, so that we have something that the board can start reviewing and finalizing. And then, an item that I just wanted to bring forward to the board's attention is that four fifty-two Main Street, that is the, um, the building that's owned by the Historic Society that hit, that sits on the Shanahan parking lot, uh, there was an incident that occurred recently with, um, snow removal and ownership of the property, so we had done a little research, so as you'll see in the memo, originally back in nineteen ninety-one, the select board had granted the Historic Society permission to relocate a structure that was given to the Historic Society on town property, and originally, the use for that particular structure was to be a museum for the Historic Society, and they had opened it up to be a museum. Later, down the road, it had changed into a residential unit, um, I have not been able to locate any minutes and/or approvals from the select board to transform this into a residential unit, but there are building permits to support such, so utilities are run, uh, to the actual, uh, unit, and it has been occupied, um, since it was transformed, so the rent that's collected goes to the Historic Society, and there are taxes that the Historic Society does pay to the town, but when you look at the tax bill and you look at the property card, they don't own the property, they only own the building, so they're only paying taxes on the square footage of the building. That being said, because the town never formally entered into any lease agreement or ground lease agreement or any agreement with the Historic Society, the ownership of the property remains very fuzzy, so the most recent incident that occurred is that we had originally proposed as part of a CPC project to relocate, um, the building to a different area that would better suit, um, the, the needs of that particular area, because we were talking about creating a parking lot, a more formal parking lot, um, that application was, uh, not looked upon favorably, so we were not able to move forward with that, so with taking into consideration our plans for moving forward with the Shanahan parking lot, we kind of sectioned off that particular area and provided its own driveway and tried to make it look like a separate residence, because there has been occasions where individuals will walk into the home, thinking that it's either a facility or a snack shack or something of that nature, so by separating it off, we thought we would give the, the unit more privacy and a designated driveway. But what ended up happening is now that there's a designated driveway, there's no snow removal, because it's a driveway, so the resident had called town hall saying, I can't get out of my house because there's no snow removal, so the Historic Society was contacted, and the Historic Society then, um, provided a lease in which the lease says that the snow removal as, is a responsibility of the tenant, so the tenant is confused because for the last some odd years, they've never had to worry about snow removal whatsoever, and they thought it was town property. So, now that we know that there's no cleared boundaries or delineations or granted uses for or use of property to the Historic Society, that opens up the town for enormous amounts of liability, so in communicating with town council, it is suggested that we try and rectify this by creating a ground lease that could put forward some terms that, again, distinguish what is town property or how town property is being used, and that it is up to the Historic Society and the tenant, um, and maybe we run that agreement with the use of the tenant of that property now, and then in the future, if that was to change, that it would come back before the select board, and the select board could determine whether or not it still wanted to allow the property to be used in that fashion, because you're ultimately granting a use of location to the Historic Society to use that property. So, I am working with town council to formalize some type of agreement that can come back before the select board, so that you can review it, but it is something that came to my attention, and it does, um, warrant more swift action by the board to make sure that we're properly, um, responding to the resident as, you know, it's important for that individual to be able to leave their house. So, I just want to make sure that we're being mindful of that and that we're making sure that the town has proper protections in place. So hopefully, that will be on your upcoming select board agenda, if not sometime soon thereafter.
But we're supposed to get another storm, maybe not bad, but on Thursday, is there any, anything being done right now to make sure that this person can get in?
So I was informed by the, um, tenant that they had been in communications with the landlord and that, um, they would allow for plow services and that the, um, tenant would be charged.
Okay, so they have a service that's gonna make sure it can get in and out, okay, good.
And then, the other update that I wanted to bring forward to the board is that I'm currently in collective bargaining discussions with the police union, and at one of our first initial meetings, they had mentioned the desire to potentially create a superiors unit in addition to the patrolman's unit. So, they had talked about potentially removing two of the superior officers that currently are within the patrolman's unit that have different levels of responsibility, including, um, internal investigations, uh, which can cause a lot of issues with the other, um, members, since they're all part of one collective bargaining unit, and so it kind of adds a different level of, of, um, involvement, since they don't really feel comfortable with, you know, when you have a unit, a collective bargaining unit, you're all supposed to together advocate for equity and, and understanding under your employment contract, and where you have some of those members who are in charge with investigating you, that can cause a lot of backlash within the union internally, so they are looking to remove those positions and potentially create some changes, so one would be to create a captain's position and a lieutenant's position, and then the contract that they would put forward would essentially mirror what's being proposed by the patrolman's unit. However, in order for them to move forward with any of these changes, they would need the select board to adopt, um, and approve the creation of the new unit. So, I've asked the attorney and the union representative to provide a written proposal for the select board to review in terms of what they're looking to create and how they're looking to create that unit, so that you can take a vote on that, um, at an upcoming meeting, and again, that would be timely because of the budget and settling and finalizing the agreement with the patrolman's unit, if you were to create another one, we would need to make sure that the terms of that agreement were set as well, so, um, that's something that you will be seeing in the next few meetings.
Okay.
For projects requests and residential concerns, I have none, uh, field use property use, special event permits, I have none, uh, important upcoming dates. I had the roundtable discussions with the moderator listed, I'm not sure if there's been any more development on that, so I was hoping he might be able to answer more questions, but he is not here, so if I receive any additional information, I will be sure to share it with the board, but those were the initial dates. Uh, the school budget presentation, like I mentioned, Tuesday, February twenty-fifth, at six P M over at the school. The finance board meeting is on February twenty-sixth as well, the planning board meeting, like we mentioned, is on March fourth, and again, just to make sure this is on everyone's calendar, town meeting is April twenty-eighth. For grants, I have no updates procurement, we had approved the, um, capital project of moving forward with the electrical upgrades for the town hall complex, so that's to look at the electrical, um, what do you call it, the, um, breaker, what is that? The electrical box, what is it called?
Breaker box.
Yeah, so essentially, we have, um, panels, electrical panels, there it is, panels, um, that are not compliant, so we had allocated capital money to have an engineer take a look at the complex and what would be necessary in order to upgrade, upgrade those panels. So, we had worked with CBE Engineering, and they have provided their upgraded, um, their updated plans as to how we would go about it. Uh, a little bit about it is that they were looking at taking town hall and the library and putting them on one system and then removing public safety. Remember, public safety does have the emergency generator, which backs up town hall as well, so they had worked on a proposal that, again, would take us all off of one and kind of separate us and give us that, um, extra security if needed, so we're waiting to get the final specifications that we would then utilize to go out to bid, but we are finalizing the construction costs as well, so we can move forward with potentially adding an additional project next fiscal year for the actual implementation of getting that completed. And then, for the roadway resurfacing contract, that was, uh, awarded to EJ Paving, so they came in under, so Arthur's working on finalizing those details. And then for meetings and events, I have all of the meetings and events that I've attended in the last two weeks, and if there's anything that stands out, I would be, um, happy to answer your questions.
The, uh, roundtable with the moderator, uh, what times are those?
I'm not certain, I can get some more details, I believe they were going to be at six, six-thirty.
Are we all set on that? Yes, no? Yes, that was a lot, thank you for, it's nice to have the summary document to look back on, and clearly, you're getting a lot done really quickly. We did the minutes, we did that, we did town administrator time, um, it's now time for select board time, um, and you can give updates and thank yous, and you can also, if you have future agenda items and you want to shout them out now, that's a good time for that too as well. Ed, do you have anything?
No, I don't have anything.
Mark?
No, I just, I hope, and anybody that was watching, then, uh, we talked about Mike putting that sign downtown, I mean, he's nicest guy in the world, I went to school with him. I went to school with his son. He just...
I was trying to place his children in the, yeah, okay.
Nah, just, I mean...
The Terras, yep.
I, I, I hope somebody local can help him out.
Yeah.
It would mean a lot.
Be a miracle. Yep. That's true.
Just want to thank the plow drivers, and good luck on Thursday, keep up the good work. I'm very grateful for them.
And Jason?
Yeah, I'll echo that. I mean, this last storm was really difficult because of the rain that came in after the snow, and then it turned back to snow and froze, and, yeah, it was a lot of hard work, and it was long hours overnight through the day. So, I really appreciate it. I also wanted to thank the light department for all the work they did prior to the storm for many, many years, because there was a lot of places that lost power for extended periods of time. I don't know if anybody drove over the bridge and saw their monke basket had no power and no power of the gas stations. So, the hard work that they've been putting in over the years really pays off as well. I wanted to thank them too.
And the electric company, our lights stay on. Are you all set?
Yes.
So, I just wanted to reemphasize the importance of the school budget hearing on Tuesday. I know that on both sides of the fence, the school side and the town side, we never get a lot of state money rolling into us. We don't get money that way. Rebecca works tirelessly to bring in grants to get things done that we otherwise couldn't get done, and every year, we juggle our budget in town. You know, if there's not so many elections, we're able to move money from elections over to another office that might have maybe the assessors if they have to do their annual overhaul of everything. So, it's always a struggle. I don't, can't think of a single year where it's easy. And I, the other side to it is that, yes, we do try to maintain our positions and our services, as does the school, but we also are constantly looking for the efficiencies. And I know that Rebecca's been working towards that this year again, consolidating some expenses, consolidating some of the technology budgets, always, always looking for cost-effective efficiencies that can help us just get another twenty thousand dollars to some budget. And, you know, the difficulty with, if the school budget were to pass by two of the towns and not ours, a five-hundred-thousand-dollar deficit for us trying to come up with that is just devastating. Even a fifty to a hundred-thousand-dollar cut in our budgets would leave our library without having certification, would leave our police understaffed, our fire department without the help they need. We just, we have the same problem, is what my point, and I thought that might be the message to bring to the school committee. I know that they want to deliver the best education possible, and I certainly support that. I think it's a tough job they have, but eight-hundred-thousand-dollar increase is too much for us to absorb in a budget year. And I think it's a difficult year financially for many, many people, not just people who retire, I mean, people across all spectrums, especially if you have kids, I think, with the cost of food and everything, your budget has got to be tough. And it's just a difficult period we're going through, and I'm hopeful that we will see collaborative work with our school to bring this budget to something that doesn't require an override, if possible, if at all possible. We would like to, I think, avoid having to ask our taxpayers for that this year. Again, you know, you just try to buy one year at a time. At this point, we can't, can't fix the fact that the state is not providing funding for regional transportation, not providing additional aid to small towns like us because they perceive that we're all set. We never get enough money to fix our roads and our highways. We, we are looking all over the place to find that money other than from the state. So, I think that, that's kind of the message we're getting from the state on the school side and the town side, in that we, we just need to work with them more and make sure that message is delivered at the budget. Otherwise, they may not understand. I think that's the point. If you go to the hearing and you speak, to help them to understand that we just don't have the ability to come up with that kind of money in our, in the, in the small amount of discretionary budget money that we have, you know? So, that's my speech. I'm done. Thanks for listening. Then, in correspondence, there's a drinking water program. Important information on lead and copper rule revision. I'm afraid to ask. I skimmed through some of it and then just stopped because I thought, oh, more, more rule changes, is that what we're looking at?
It was more so just an informative letter from the Water and Sewer Superintendent, alerting decision-makers about some upcoming changes.
Okay.
And something that was not listed on the agenda is a letter that we received from the town of West Newbury in regards to the Woodyer School Committee and the election of representatives to the Woodyer School Committee as well.
Did you want to have that on your, the next agenda, Jason? This?
If you want.
Well, I can't. It's Woodyer. I have to stay out of it.
Yeah, sure.
Ethics has been very clear. Okay, so maybe put that on the next agenda. It's not too late, right? To get it for it, okay. Anything else on next agenda? I think there'll be budget, budgets, right?
Yes, my goal is to have the budget before you to start that conversation.
Take up a lot of our star, time. All set?
All set.
I think you can, our next meeting will be on Monday, March third, at six-thirty P.M. March, really? We'll be out of February.
Already.
Okay, want to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn at nine oh five. We have to.
Yeah, I'll second that.
All in favor?